This open meeting of the Newbury Library Board of Trustees is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth. Due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus, in order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law. Have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public parties to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the preparations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment after all of our comments. Signs on will allow them to have opportunity to speak. For this meeting, the trustees meeting by video Zoom conference, as posted on the agenda on Town's website, identifying how the public may. Here we are. All right. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
All right. Want me to read them?
Sure, if you would.
Thank you. All right. The meeting was called to order via Zoom at 10:00 a.m. In attendance, Dick Pasery, Margaret Grimes, Teri Lutcher, Alex Burke, Dick Raven, Erin. How do you pronounce your last name, Erin?
Wimmet.
Wimmet.
Kind of like, kind of like Willetts. It's Wimmet.
Thank you. I just didn't want to mispronounce it. Jean Ackerly, the board voted unanimously to approve the minutes from the August 20th meeting. Jean presented her director's report. The board voted unanimously to increase funds from the following accounts in order to meet the state aid standards. $1,000 increase from gift and donation, $4,000 increase from state aid fund, $1,000 increase from Arthur Johnson Fund, and $200 from Randall Fund, and $225 from Hatch Book Fund. Does that sound right, Jean?
Yes.
Okay. Erin presented the idea of an outdoor story walk trail in the gardens and on the grounds of the library. The 20 stations would be permanent with changing stories. Erin and Jean will put together a proposal with details of materials, services, and funds needed. The board began discussion about the Friday after Thanksgiving being a paid holiday to be continued during the next meeting. The board discussed paint samples for redoing the meeting room to make it more suitable for the upcoming gallery installation. Jean will send virtual paint color samples for the board to vote on. The next meeting will be Friday, October 30th. And thank you, Dick Raven, for those last minutes that I added because I was not there.
You're welcome. Any comments? Motion? I move. Second? So Dick moves, Teri seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unanimous. All right. The story walk.
I think I will let Erin take it from here.
Okay. Um, where to begin? So I've been in communications with Eileen and Lillian over at Town Hall, just to kind of make sure all of the payment process is going to go through smoothly. And we did talk about if we get the Nade grant to cover this and how to handle all of that. So when the Nade check, if and when the Nade check comes in the end of December, we will be able to basically reimburse state aid, but in a weird kind of way. So, but it will be fine.
Erin, maybe I will interrupt there because I should have put the whole Nade thing out there because only Dick and Alex will be aware of that.
Yep.
So I got my annual card from the Nade folks telling me when the deadline was to apply for grants for this season. And after thinking about what, what we might go for, I thought about the, the story walk and I thought it would, you know, be a perfect thing to ask them for because they loved it. They prefer things that are cultural and community oriented in nature. And so I thought we could apply for it for that. They most likely would not fund all of it, but they have funded, I believe, up to about 4,500 in the past. So, you know, I have no idea where they're at now with COVID and everything else, but I was encouraged that I got the, the card because I was trying to figure out if I should just go ahead and, and apply for it, which I would have done, but I was encouraged to get the card. So probably the trustees should vote on whether they'd like to use Nade funds, should they be available, which is going to be tricky in terms of our promoting it because we don't find out about the Nade grant usually until the end of December. So we wouldn't be able to go ahead and say, you know, sponsored by the Newbury Port Area Industrial Foundation. We'd have to, to wait on that. But, you know, it's, it's up to the trustees to decide whether they'd like to go that route.
Yeah, I think just to back up, it probably would be helpful, get an understanding of the overall cost was for the, you know, knowing that this is something that we can augment that with, I think probably having a full understanding of what the project is and we can talk about, you know, approving Nade funds for. So if we can go back to Erin to give us an overview of the magnitude of the project from a number of stations and from a cost standpoint, the overall cost of it is.
Okay. So the quote, the quote that I received for 18 stations from Barking Dog Exhibits is And one component of the project that is not accounted for, the, so James and the DPW will be, have agreed that they will install the posts, but they would have to obtain either concrete footings or gravel to go into each hole in the ground to support the posts. So I'm not entirely sure how that would pan out and whether, where, where those costs would be accounted for and which budgets and things like that. So there is that unknown factor. And we did, we did the 18 posts that does include one extra to kind of put into storage just in case, you know, a tree falls or a branch or something like that so that we'd be able to replace it.
Go ahead, Dick.
The, the quote you sent us was for 20 posts. When did it shift to 18?
So I did a little research on the most common picture book page count, and there is a standard, and the standard is 32. Sometimes there are picture books that are 40 pages, but not, they really do try to strictly keep to the standard of 32 pages for picture books, which is moreover what we'll be using. So that would give us 16. We have 17 because we're going to have one extra that we're going to have information either in the beginning or at the end about any sponsors that we have for the story walks, have a QR code to maybe do a raffle or something to try to track who's using it and be able to get some data. So we need, we needed kind of an extra one to have for, for that usage. And then there's the one extra that won't be installed that will be in storage in case one is, you know, broken or something happens to it. So that's how we wound up with the 18.
Thanks. I just, in summary comment, I can see this, I can see either having a contest or a classroom challenge and having 18 kid drawings going into these, doesn't only have to be a book and then just, or even content, you know, adult artists. I mean, it seems like there's a lot of ways we could use this as beyond simply doing a story walk, but I think we should think about when we talk about this for grant purposes and so forth, that it's not simply limited to elementary kids reading picture books.
Well, it's more of a family, so picture books can be family books, if that makes sense. So the picture book that we're putting out for this called Owl Moon by Jane Yolen.
I love that book.
It's a beautiful book and it's incredible artwork. It's really not, it's not like a kid's book. It really is an all ages kind of thing. It's considered poetry. It's just that when you, in the publishing world, it seems that 32 pages for these books that have picture spreads and text, they really do have a standard. So it seemed like we should go with the most popular thing because we can't account for every kind of permutation that we might use the story walk for. So we kind, you know, kind of have to pick how will we most use it? It doesn't mean we can't use it for other things, but I figured we'd go with the most, you know, the most common possible page count because you're creating a path. So if you wanted to have other page counts that were less common, you'd wind up with gaps or you would wind up with, you know, the last two have nothing on them or things like, you know what I mean? Things like that. So that was why it kind of got brought down. So we have 17 stations out there, which is one extra station to allow for a little bit of flexibility. But that was kind of how that came, that number came about.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? So what if, if we, the unknown factor seems to be any cost that the DPW may incur. So to be on the safe side, I'd like to think that they're going to be at the front of that cost, but in the event that they don't, I think it probably would be safe if we, I would say, we're, what, at 5,400 for this?
Just as a potential amount about the stone or gravel, because we had our driveway, we gravled last year and it was $400, enough for four cars. So it's not, you can do the gravel part without being a huge cost.
So if we, if we carried ours, put a not to exceed, say $6,000, that should be more than enough to cover any cost that the DPW incurs, I would think, for the gravel and for the, actually for the bags of concrete that they're going to throw in. They're not going to charge us for their time. So it's going to be for the cost of the, the concrete and any gravel that they throw into the building also. And I, my guess is it's probably going to be more concrete than it is gravel. So I don't know, carrying another, you know, essentially another $600 just to, as a not to exceed amount, I think probably would make sense.
Dick, I do want to, if I could mention here also that, especially for this first one, but we're hoping for others as well, that there will be a night walk component to it. And so Erin and I have been conceiving of solar lights and, and situations like that. And I'm not asking the trustees for that. We're going to hope, we're going to go to the friends. They actually are having a meeting next week and we were going to ask Pam Kinney, our former engineer, who loves projects like this, hopefully she'll like this one, and have her, you know, figure out what kind of equipment we would want and need and how to, how to install it and also ask the friends to pay for that. So I just wanted you to get, to catch that glimpse of, you know, that there will be other expenses. We're not asking for state aid for that.
Okay. That is, that's something that's down the line at some point, Jean.
Um, well, we're, we're hoping they might get started on fairly soon because this one is a perfect nighttime. What's the word I'm looking for?
Glory walk.
Art, yeah, installation. It's the perfect, you know, because of the moon and, and the other thing that I've told Dick and Alex, but I've got Jim Parks from Wingmasters, who's going to come bring some owls on the day that we're hoping will be the opening day. It's his favorite book as well and favorite book about owls, anyway, and he's, he's an owl nut. So he'll be there on the, on December 5th, which is the day we're shooting for. So maybe not right off the bat, but you know, we would like that to be part of this particular installation if we can.
Right. And then there's the sign. So we need to make a sign to mount on the, I guess, the front left corner of the building with like an arrow that says story walk to point, just as directional signage, so that people can see from the parking lot where this starts. So it will pull them, kind of pull them in and pull them over there.
Will there be other signage along the pathway?
Not, you'll be able to see the next station from where you are, so they won't be that far apart. Hopefully they know where to go.
Now that initial sign, that first directional sign, do we anticipate asking the friends to pay for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And if they don't?
Maybe we apply for a cultural council grant because they are, they are telling us, apply away because they've got funds. So that's going to actual, actually pay for the Wingmasters gentlemen because Katie had a grant that was approved, but then we didn't have that program. So we're going to do a switcheroo.
Okay. I, you know, just the, you know, cost of 17 solar stations is, my, my gut feeling is it's not going to be inexpensive and I hope it's not beyond what the friends would be anticipating. Okay. Just that and if, maybe we'll look at other sources, I guess.
And I wonder from a marketing point of view, grant writing point of view, if there's a way to bring in the idea that this is partly a response to COVID and the reluctance of people to enter the library building and our, our, our need to reach out to our community to bring the library to them.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And so I think that granters may have COVID money, you know?
Yes.
For stuff like this.
Right.
This is, hook that in, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, I have some wording put together that I'd like to run by you, just on how we're going to position this and how we're going to promote it. And it, tying things into COVID and reaching out to the community and trying to do something that kind of is resiliency building within the community, things like that. So I, I do have some stuff after this meeting I'd love to send you and get your thoughts on.
Yeah, because it is, it's tricky because we'd love to just put it right out there, you know, sponsored by, by Nade, but we can't do that initially. So we're trying to figure out, like, like Erin said, we're trying to figure out what our wording is going to be. And Dick, I, you know, I can write the letter, I always write the letter, but if you want to provide your editing skills, that would be much appreciated.
Sure.
Okay.
Will the path be handicapped accessible?
Say that again?
Will the path be handicapped accessible?
Probably not in the way that if you went hiking in the woods at a state park, it, it isn't paved, you know? It's, it's the ground, it slopes, it, so I'm, I'm not sure, I have wondered about how, wondered about that, but I don't see how it would be possible.
Unless somebody put down a cement path, really, which.
Cement or what they're using. If you haven't been out to Hellcat since its renovation.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
Kind of brilliant what they've done.
That's true. Yeah.
Maybe that would be something for down the road. I don't know.
I think it's a fundraiser, that's a good fundraiser if we get it up.
Yeah.
The Hellcat, I think it's fiber, I'm not sure what it is. Maybe you know, Dick, what they've done to the new Hellcat, but they've replaced all the, all the, all the wood with a manmade material.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that.
And the stairs, so now it's completely accessible to other people.
Which is wonderful.
Is it, is it a moby mat?
I don't know what it is.
A what?
A moby mat. That's what they use on some of the access paths to the beach.
Well, it looks, boards.
Oh.
It's made to look like, like, a little bit like timber.
Okay.
And, yeah. And they've expanded the trail too, so it's really quite exciting to be on.
All right. That's something that we should be cognizant of going forward about the handicap accessibility issue. I hadn't thought of that, but that's something we have to be aware of.
Are there requirements, Dick?
I believe, I believe the Americans with Disabilities Act would apply, especially in a public facility.
So is our gardens back there supposed to be handicapped accessible already?
I, I don't want to say yes and no, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Definitely, it definitely may come into the.
We should, we, we need to investigate this before we write a check to anybody, it seems to me. You know, if there's, if there's a legal requirement that we're, that we're missing, then that's a serious problem.
Yeah, and I think that, that may be something you want to run through, through James, being the Towns Facilities Manager. Hopefully he is aware of that. I, I know that it applies obviously in the interior and the access to a building and, you know, I think, you know, and it has changed over time. There's things in our building now that probably have to modify going forward. James would be the source, I believe.
Okay. So for James, we can't, they're off on Fridays, right? So we can't get.
I, I don't know if the DPW is off on Fridays.
They're, they're probably plowing today and James is reachable by text on Fridays. I've texted him on Fridays.
Okay. So maybe we should ask him. So we do have a deadline. If we miss this pay period for the billing, then we aren't looking at getting this installed until either late December or into the new year.
Yeah. And it may, unfortunately, it may come to that. I don't know that, but I mean, that, I hadn't given a thought to the ADA issue.
Is it something we might be able to research online?
I'm trying to, yeah, about the ADA. Hold on a sec. I'm not sure where to leave on. Is there a way to?
Should be an extensive, typical government document. It's not going to jump out right at you, probably. I haven't read it in a long time, but if you fall asleep, I'll understand why.
All right, I'm going to, I just did a thing on the ADA and for, this is for playground?
Yeah.
And outdoor play areas. So I'm going to send it as an email.
Okay. That would be helpful.
But in general, so I should send James a text and just say, do you know if there are any ADA requirements?
ADA requirements for this.
For this? Okay. Can you do that right?
Yeah. And, you know, and I think we can, we can move forward with, you know, if we want to, without voting on this and establishing the, you know, the, the not to exceed limits and forward with this. We're going to need the stations anyway, regardless of whatever, you know, the ADA issue is, and let's get those at least in, in motion and in, in our hands and then deal with the other issues as they come up or not come up.
Nothing simple, but all will be accomplished.
No, no, it isn't, you know, and it's regulation upon regulation and, and obviously it's there for a purpose, so.
Well, I mean, you know, there's a legal obligation to make this right. There's also a moral obligation to make it right.
There's no question about it, no question about it. And that, and I think that's what the ADA has tried to do, is deal with both of those. So, yeah, good point. But, you know, I think we can move forward with our planning and initial steps in this process and just add to it as we're going along. And if we find that, that we need to do some kind of, something to make this compliant, maybe it is a matter of working with DPW to come up with a pathway that has a hard surface on it and maybe back looking for additional funds to put that hard surface in. So now, if you've got somebody who's got a walker or wheelchair or, you know, whatever, I mean, you want this accessible.
The moby mat that I mentioned is a flexible surface, but it, for instance, it stops a wheelchair from sinking in the sand.
Okay.
And it's, it doesn't require anything except paying attention to the placement of it.
Right. Okay. So that's something that, you know, if we need to go down that route, but it is something maybe even if we're not required to do it, it is something we look at as a, you know, step down the road that we will initiate.
Because it could go over the grass. You could just go over the grass.
I know, yeah, absolutely. So, okay. All right. Anybody want to make a motion to buy $6,000, not to exceed $6,000 for the story walk items? Okay. So.
Just one question, Erin, please. Which of these options do the $5,400 address and are the posts included?
They are.
Okay, good.
The posts, everything is included except the cement or the, or the gravel needed to do the holes in the ground.
But these are the aluminum?
Yes.
Right.
Not the.
As opposed to putting the, the four by fours in.
Yeah.
Good. All right. So a motion to Teri. Teri is going, she's moving that we provide a not to exceed $6,000 for the components of the story walk. There is a second.
From state aid.
From state aid.
Thank you.
And Alex has seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous? We're all in, we're all in support. Okay, unanimous? We're all in, we're all in support. And if, and the other understanding is it doesn't have to be part of the, I don't know, Jean, unless you want a part of the vote, that the Nade grant, if it comes through, will be utilized to reimburse.
Yes, I, I think that should be part of it.
Okay, so, uh, we can just add that to it and, you know, amend our, our vote that if in fact, uh, a Nade grant is received, it will be utilized to, um, reimburse, uh, that portion of the funds to the State 8 account.
It could be, let me just comment that if we learn we must put in a handicap accessible path, we could target the grant specifically for that, for example, um, as opposed to generally supportive of the project.
Dick, could you talk a little louder for some reason? I'm not hearing.
No, I'm kind of hoarse. Um, if, if we learn we must put in a, uh, an accessible path, a grant could be targeted just for that, for that particular expense, as a very desirable thing. It's a more marketing thing. But the money is the money and the money goes into the pot, depending on how we want to sell it. So if we discover that this is something we need to do or want to do, that may be a way to think about our, our, the grant process. Anyway, you can talk about that offline.
I have a feeling that any kind of, um, path like that would probably, it might be cost prohibitive. Um, because it covers such a big, it's a huge area. That is a really lot, you know, it, it goes all around and loops. I'm just thinking that's gonna be, that would be a lot of money. Not saying we can't go for it. It would be great. Um.
I want to mention too that the Nade grant is due by, uh, the application is due by November 6th.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
Just next?
Which is next week. Next Friday.
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
Well. So, um, want to change votes, uh, I'll just go forward with the way we're, we're thinking right now, and if the money does come in and we have to deal with the ADA issue, we sit down again and figure out, uh, how we're going to handle that. And I think Erin is correct. It's probably going to be costly, but, uh, it may be a combination of the Nade grant plus additional state funds, um, if we think it's worthwhile doing, or going after additional funding. Now.
Should I take off the, the whole Nade thing in our vote? Or you want me to keep that?
Uh, I don't know. What's the thought? Just go with the not to exceed 6,000.
I think so.
Leave it at that.
Yeah, leave it at the, just at the 6,000. If everybody's in agreement with that, and then we can, if the Nade grant comes in, we can then gather again and decide.
Deal with it.
Handle it.
Yeah.
That work?
Thank you. Yep.
Thanks, Margaret. All right. Uh, next item. Margaret, you have to leave by, uh.
No, I don't. I do not have.
You have a snow day?
Oh, bite your tongue, Richard.
As I know, as I was, as I'm looking out, uh, Elm Street is now, uh, well, getting covered.
Yeah. I, I read somewhere though that they are going to, I can't remember which community it was, but they are going to, um, have snow days for kids because they think it's important for them to have that day to play in the snow and have hot chocolate and read books. All those wonderful things that everybody does on a snow day.
Right. Okay.
Oh dear.
All right, so let's move on to the next topic. Um, holiday hours. Jean?
Um, so I, I didn't know if, if, you know, if you wanted to consider at all having, going into executive session with, with this and having Erin and I not there. I just wanted to put out that that could be a consideration. But you all have the information that I sent, and so it, it really is your choice. And, you know, the staff and, and all of us will survive, no matter what you decide.
All right, uh, any thoughts? So, uh, executive session, I don't particularly think it's necessary, but.
I don't think so either.
I don't either.
Me neither.
All right, so we're, we're an open session, so.
So on a seasonal and very important note, the first snowmobile just ran down Larkin Road. Aye, 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 aye. Anyway.
I had heard it might snow, but I didn't quite register.
Yeah, I don't either.
I didn't think it was gonna be like this.
Nor did I. Oh, well.
All right.
Tis what it is.
So I, I guess, Jean, what have we done in the past?
We, uh, except for last year, when, and again, this is full-time staff.
Right.
Um, used their Veterans Day floating holiday. Everybody agreed to do that, and then the trustees agreed to close the building for that day, and Town Hall was notified, and, uh, I think they gave approval. And the part-time staff, I think, either didn't work or made up the hours.
So, it, that was consistent with town policy? Would you, yeah, I, I guess, yeah, that was consistent with the town policy.
Yeah, it, it need, it needed to be run by them though, be, I guess, because the building was being closed. Um, but it had never, you know, this, since I've been here, it had never been done before.
The last year was, yeah, that was a first.
That was a first, and all the years before it, people worked.
Okay. And, and again, me anyway, the horns of the dilemma are, um, there are town policies. There are, town employees are granted a specific number of, uh, holidays during the course of the year. And this would kind of take the library employees out of the equation of the greater, uh, town employee provide an additional holiday. In essence, that's what it is. Um, I'm not sure what kind of, you know, issues this raise will raise with the, the town, uh, and I'm not sure we're in a position to even, uh, raise that issue with the town, unless we go for some kind of personnel change. I think it's a bigger issue than just having that day off and providing, you know, we have the funds obviously, but granting a, um, something that's different than the rest of the town employees are getting. Are we opening up Pandora's box in terms of a larger issue for the town? Not saying it shouldn't be addressed, but I'm just saying, in my perspective, that's, that's what I'm seeing. There's X number of, uh, legal holidays that everybody gets. Town employees get them, well, you're all town employees. That's the issue. We're not an island unto ourselves. We are in fact part of the town policy. That creates, for me anyway, the horns of the dilemma. Anybody else? Please enter in on this, and thoughts, uh, more than welcome.
Are there any other town departments that are, uh, that aren't the ones you mentioned that are closed on Fri-, you know, you said most town offices are closed.
Town Hall is, yeah. Town Hall is closed on.
What about the Council on Aging?
They're always closed on Friday.
So we're, you're the only town department that is open on Friday?
Except for DPW for some of the year. I know they, they have the option of, of spreading out their hours, especially in the summer, where they work a couple of long days and then they work, work, either work on Friday or don't have Friday. It's, it's, I've never been completely clear on what DPW does. And of course, PD and Fire, you know, they, they work on that Friday. So it's really mostly Town Hall and, and COA.
Yeah, and in Town, in Town Hall, I guess when this was implemented, but three, three plus years ago, um, it was, uh, with the understanding at that time anyway, that Town Hall is open on, on Tuesday night. And that, that's when they opted to close on Fridays, when they had people working on Tuesday nights. That's why, and I still, I think it's nuts, but that's, yeah, I think they should be open on Friday. Yeah, uh, so it, it, for me anyway, personally, it, it does create a, um, an issue that's bigger than just us saying, yes, you should have that day off. And I understand that and I support it. I mean, like I said the last time, I always had Friday after Thanksgiving off, but I always had to take personal time on vacation. Loud, but, uh, you know, that's the only way we could do it. So, anybody has some insight on how this should played? I, uh, more than link to, you know? So, I, I.
The only thing, I, I, oh, go ahead.
Oh, well, I just want to say to Dick that I appreciate you laying it out like that. Um, I, it, it gives me a different perspective that I didn't really have, so, anyway.
Yeah. So I mean, I, you know, and I'm not opposed to us opening up a dialogue with, uh, with the, the personnel board, which we probably should. But it's, it's, it's coming to grips with the fact that we are town employees, or the staff is town employees, who have to live by, you know, town policy, uh, even though we were open different hours or whatever, personnel policies are across the board. Once you start, you know, showing or playing differently or allowing differently.
Right, because, well, so you, let me just get this straight. It's, it basically, I think what you said was, is that it would give library, um, employees an extra holiday than the rest.
At least that's the way I interpreted it anyway. Yeah, uh, because.
Jean, how to, can I, is that a correct interpretation?
Um, yes.
Because it just so ha, it's just, it's a matter of days when people are open and closed, and it just so happens that it's the day after Thanksgiving is a Friday always.
Right.
There, there could be the argument, sorry.
Go ahead. No, 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 go ahead.
There, you know, I, but it's a question, and maybe it's not a question that anybody feels comfortable asking, but, you know, if Town Hall was open on Friday, would there have already been some consideration on making that Friday after Ho- after Halloween, after Thanksgiving, a, um, holiday as well? I mean, I, I'm pretty sure the town, um, follows state holidays as much as possible, but I, if I understand it, and I could be wrong, I think they can also proclaim a couple of, of municipal holidays. And so I've al, I've always wondered, I've never had the conversation with anybody, but I've always wondered if Town Hall was open on Friday, if somewhere along the line, they would have made that the Friday after Thanksgiving a town holiday. So, you know, it's a question that can be asked, but it's, might be an awkward one.
Well, I don't know. It's hypothetical. It doesn't matter, because it's not. So.
Right.
If you're in the town, you don't care about that. Here's my, it's a, perhaps a ridiculous question, but we're closed Mondays, right?
Right.
Right.
If the library were, were open Mondays and closed Fridays, this would never be a problem again.
Can you talk a little louder, Dick? I'm still having trouble hearing you.
I said, if the library were open Mondays and closed Fridays, this would never be a problem again.
Right.
Right. Okay. Yeah. So, that's, that's a, that's an al, an alternative.
So call it a, call it a Monday and be done with it.
When?
Erin?
When, I, I don't even know if this is worth bringing, mentioning is, um, we, and now I just lost that. I knew it was a tenuous script. There's, Town Hall has different hours than us. So for instance, if there is a snowstorm and we're open until seven, but Town Hall closed at four, we have, we, we operate differently. So it's, it's, it wouldn't, it's, has to do with holidays, not closures from storms, but we do have different, um, slightly different operations, I guess, um, to look at, because we are a little bit of an anomaly. So in that vein, I guess it doesn't bother me as much to look at it as the Friday, um, when Town Hall's already closed. That said, it might be great to approach Town Hall and asking for this as a holiday, because then all of them would get a floating holiday like we do for the Monday holidays. And that would kind of even things out, so it'd be more fair. Does that make sense?
Do we then have to change the policy for all the town employees by doing this, by asking this? Because that's a little, I don't want to do that.
No, that would be a, a thing to Tracy if we were going to her, just to be able to say, there is a possibility of doing it this way. Um, I don't know, just throwing it out there as something, they would get something if we were to get this as a holiday. So I was trying to think of how it would work for them.
So, there, how is Veterans Day a floating holiday for the library employees?
Well, it, it's not this year because it's on a Wednesday, but last year it was on a Monday, and so we had it as a floating holiday.
Uh-huh.
So it will be closed? The library will be closed on Armistice Day?
Yes.
Veterans Day?
I knew what you meant.
Well, trying to be modern. Struggle.
And you know what Erin said is, is a little bit true. We are an anomaly and in, you know, in terms of being open on Saturdays and then the, those tricky situations we get into when we're open and there's a blizzard going on outside. It's, you know, but in, in I, my experience with the, the town, as, you know, you have to remind them of that because they, you know, they don't, they just think of us all as, as the same, and they don't necessarily have our hours firmly implanted in their, their brains. So, you know, on, on a couple of occasions, I, I have had to emphasize, you know, like say on a Thursday, um, they're expect, they're, we're, they're predicting snow on Saturday and we're going to be open, but all Town Hall employees will be home. I have to usually reach out and, you know, say, all right, I may have to close, or, you know, I have to text Tracy, or, so, you know, it, there is, we're not a hundred percent on the same timeline or whatever you want to call it as town employees.
We, we know that, I, I know that. It's just that this, it, just the way I'm, Dick distilled it for me, it's, the bottom line is, we're asking for another holiday for library employees. I think you guys deserve tons of holidays. You don't have enough holidays.
Right.
But that's, that's what this comes, comes down to, right?
Right.
I know.
In my mind, anyway.
Operate differently. But, right, so I'm just trying to, I had not thought of it that way, and it's just because I haven't thought enough about it, probably. Um, but if that's really what it comes down to, then the issue is bigger than just asking.
Would it be different if, um, if it weren't paid?
Or what?
Would it be different if it weren't a paid day off, if, if, if it was something that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think the town would have a problem with that.
The town wouldn't have, my sense is that we're gonna have a problem with that, because, yeah, you know, we're opting to close. And realistically, it probably should be closed. I mean, you're right. I mean, I don't think you're gonna get a whole host of.
Five people that come in.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think it's, uh, it comes down to the paid aspect of it. Yeah. You know, and if somebody, you know, if we chose to do this and somebody chose to take a vacation day, I, I, are there, do you get any personal days or just purely vacation days?
Ten, ten days.
That's, okay, is. That's, okay, is, when does that change? When does it go to fifteen days?
When you've been here fi, uh, five years.
Okay. Okay, so, all right, so there is, there are steps in this process then. So the first five years, first five years, you're at two weeks. Uh, five years and beyond, you're at three weeks.
Right.
Does it ever go to four weeks?
Yes, I think that might be at ten.
Ten, okay.
I think, I'm not certain, but, or maybe it's fifteen, I'm not certain.
Maybe, I know, I think the state, Terry, if I remember correctly, was at fifteen, and it went to four weeks. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, yeah, well, I, that's better than I thought it was, to be honest with you, Jean. I didn't think they had even had, been that enlightened. Um, you know, so.
Well, and that, you know, it's, it's just to, to point it, point it out, you know, in the, there, it's the anomaly that we are in terms of other libraries, um, where employees, I believe most of them get, um, paid, I'm quite certain most of them get paid for that Friday. And, you know, why are we such an anomaly? Um, why, why is that not the case in this town? And, and for me, I, I always come back to the fact, well, there's no motivation because Town Office employees already have it off. So, you know, it's, it is what it is, I realize. But that is, to me, is the explanation for why we are, um, an anomaly, anomaly, if I'm saying the right word. It's because there's no motivation in the town to make it a holiday, because they already have it off. Whereas other towns make it a holiday. Some of them even go through the Saturday.
Regardless, would y'all will be open and working on Saturday after Thanksgiving anyhow? Yes, no?
Yes, some libraries take that, or, you know, close for that Saturday, but I don't see any point to doing that.
The use goes up on Saturday.
Um, not right now. We're still, you know, getting back on track, but, and we're not open for appointments. We're just doing curbside on Saturday. But it is, you know, at least we wouldn't be leaving people stranded from Thursday through Tuesday, that, you know, they can pick up materials on Saturday.
So, were the agreement to surface that Friday ought to be a closed day? Salaried exempt staff would need to burn a holiday, one of the ten or fifteen days in order to achieve compensation for that day?
Yes.
That would apply to you and Katie and.
And nobody here has fifteen days. I think Jane will this summer. Every, everybody has ten, except for me.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I mean, there would be the option of having people work extra hours before and that, or an after, work an extra two hours or work an extra one hour, you know, for seven weeks, two hours for three and a half weeks. That, that would be an option.
And what's the.
Well, I think it would be an option.
And, and we, but we need to fund that. I mean, I know it's not a big deal monetary wise, but isn't that where we could, we have funds to fund people working extra hours, right?
Well, yes, I mean, that is yet another option, is for the trustees to pay out of state aid funds.
Yeah, but is that, is that a, an option that needs to be vetted through the, uh, through the Town Offices?
I would think so. I, I, I would think it would go over, um. And, you know, the, the, the more I think about it, the working an hour for seven weeks, I don't think would, cuz it needs to be in the same pay period. So, you know, it might be, you take four hours vacation and then work an extra four hours for those weeks. But, um, the state aid component, I don't think would be a, a problem at all.
No, I don't think that, it's the number of hours in the pay period is.
Right, I mean, the trustees, my understanding is have the, um, the right to, to close the building on any given day. It's just the, the payroll and personnel issues that are through the town.
Which is the bigger issue.
Right.
Realistically. I don't, I don't see any, yeah, personally, I don't see a, a clear path on this unless we have a broader discussion with Town, uh, Personnel Board at some point.
That, that might be something to do, you know, maybe this doesn't go through this year, but, um, I think it's worth a conversation with the Human Resources Board.
No, I know, I think to get a lot of this clarified, I think, and put things in place. I think you began having a conversation, I think it was a year or so ago, about the snow days. Now, I don't think that ever really went anywhere, but, uh, maybe it is something that we have to initiate so that there is clarity in terms of, um, do we have different operating hours or subject to different weather of some type, uh, and it does impact on us, and what's the impact on staff at that? They shouldn't be penalized because of, you know, they, they didn't bring on the snow. You know, so, so how do we compensate people appropriately for that? Uh, so I think it's a bigger discussion. And I think, um, hopefully does present some, uh, challenges in terms of, uh, dealing with these issues, to use some other words, but, uh, um, so I think, for me personally, I think this is a, a topic that needs a broader discussion than us. Dick's point of opening Mondays and closing Fridays mitigates this and, you know, I don't know how realistic that is and how that impacts on things, but, uh, yeah. Uh, maybe that's something we get in sync with, uh, it'd be in sync for most of the year with the town, or a good part of the year, Monday through Thursday, and the Saturdays, uh, you know, we're, we're closed, uh, in the summer anyway, uh, on, on Saturday. So, you know, our hours would be in sync with the town. And, uh, you know, maybe, you know, we look at the nighttime hours and we put them in sync with the town completely. And you're, you're open on Tuesdays, uh, in the evening, and you close at five the rest of the time. I don't know. Maybe it's, again, it's all part of a, uh, a, a larger discussion, but I think, um, if, if the difference of hours becomes problematic for us in terms of how we deal with personnel issues, maybe we have to get in sync with the town's hours.
That's interesting.
Which is so inconsistent with libraries, you know, so, you know, uh, but that, you know, I think that's all part of a larger discussion.
But we used to be open on Mondays, right, Jane?
Yeah, it became a budgetary thing, I think. That's what it was that.
Yeah, that's the only reason we're not open.
Yeah.
Can't afford to.
I mean, right, that, that's, I think I forget when we did that, Jean, but it was, you know, it was purely dollar driven. We didn't have the money to be open, uh, you know, the six days. Did it one point, but not recently. So I have, now, that's kind of where I'm at on this, it's kind of, it's a cut on the horns of it.
If we were gonna.
It's difficult because there's no flexibility for alternating paid hours.
Yeah, I mean.
Without doing it for the whole town potentially.
Right.
And that's why.
If we were ever gonna do a change of hours, the new year, because of COVID and everything's been so crazy, it's not a horrible time to consider something like that. Um, because whatever happens when we start, whether it's January or June or two thousand twenty-two or whatever, things go back to some semblance of normal, but it's not a bad time, since everything is kind of a little chaotic and always changing already, to make a change like that. So that, that is something.
But I, but I think the, uh, the broader discussion with the town is probably something we should initiate. And, uh, you know, start and see if we can, in fact, uh, at some point, have a sit down and, and just have a broad, a wide open conversation, you know, I'm not sure, I, I haven't got this kind of laid out in my mind at this point, how we would proceed with that, but I think that's where it has to start. Uh, and again, I, I like Dick's idea. The simple thing is, you know, paint Friday to, to Monday. I don't know how that impacts on the library and the staff and all of that, and those are the kinds of conversations I wanna have. Yeah, so, uh, any other thoughts, please? I'm, I'm just rambling here.
Could it be that the hours could change for the week of Thanksgiving? As a pattern?
And we work that Monday?
It work Monday and the library's closed on Friday.
I was thinking about that too.
Oh.
Hmm.
That is it. That's good.
All right.
A change in hours, establishing the opportunity for the employees of the library to enjoy Thanksgiving holiday.
Anytime.
That, that's, that could be doable. I never thought of that.
Just flip it.
Probably get more people in that day too, because people don't come in on the Friday.
Right.
Would get them on the Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and Erin's right, because everybody's so, and you, nobody knows what the heck's happening, schedule wise anyway. People just, you know, it's hard for them to keep it in their brains, so it would just be one more change.
Right. And it.
The Monday before or the Monday after? What do you think?
The Monday before it would have to be.
I just remember when I was teaching, all the obsessive students would want to come in for office hours on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And I finally learned not to have office hours. It's a, it's a one week of the year change. That's all.
Right.
That's a good idea.
So if we were to propose this, do you think it would be better for me to propose it or for you folks?
Yeah, that's, you, you can propose it, that's fine. And then if need be, we can, uh, you know, try to, yeah, the, the issue is, it doesn't matter which one of us proposes it. It's gonna, it's either gonna get a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Um, you know.
You can, if you propose it, Jean, you say the trustees with, you know, approved it.
Support.
Yeah.
Support it, and it was actually their idea.
Yeah.
You might wanna.
Blame us.
And I know, you might wanna vote on it, because I, I often get asked the question, i- is this trustee approved? So.
Oh, yes, of course we have to vote on it. Absolutely, we do. So I make a motion.
I'll second.
Great.
Any further discussion? Oh, all in favor? It's unanimous. Excellent.
Hi.
Yeah.
There you go, Terry.
It started with Dick. He planted the seed on the Monday. Uh, you know, and I, and I like Dick's idea. Maybe it's something to consider going forward.
It's all Dick's fault.
It usually is.
But I, you know, I think going forward, um, think about, you know, if we're then, within, in sync with the town, come a lot of hours anyway, at least the days, not necessarily the hours. And I think really, I, my preference is that we still remain open, you know, the nights that we are open. So I think by a different kind of service that was.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's good. Thanks, Terry.
Very good idea to eliminate these points of conflict.
Yeah.
But we're always the outlier.
No, no, ask you, yeah, definitely, definitely. And, and, you know, and, you know, that's where I think if we can initiate some conversation, for, for anything, I think it will give some clarity to us anyway, in terms of what the town, is there a handbook, by the way, Jean?
Yes.
Personnel handbook?
Yes, it's on the town website.
Oh, it is?
It's in the Human Resources section.
Oh, all right, so maybe we should start by taking a look at that and knowing, you know.
That might be good.
Only taken me ten years to figure that one out. Oh, good. All right, so, excellent. Do you have something else?
Uh, the community room.
The painting, painting.
So, a, as I said in my email, when I went to send the, the online version of the colors that Dick looked at and Catherine picked out, I, I wasn't gonna, I mean, they were just shades and shades darker. So this was the one, solemn silence is, there it is. And even there, it looks a little darker. Oh, no, it's about the same. It's a, a warm gray, which, um, is, I guess, recommended for any wall that's going to have art hangings and, and things such as that. And Catherine liked it.
Yeah, that was, Catherine, didn't Catherine pick that one out?
These were the two she wanted us to focus on, yeah. So I contacted Catherine. She was having a, a retreat on Cape Cod. Um, but she said when she got back, she would, uh, be in touch. And I said, you know, she wants to get started painting. I said, as long as it's after Election Day, you know, it should be fine to do. So, you know, this was for the Nade grant that we applied for last year. And it was supposed to include the equipment that I have purchased, the new hanging system, which Catherine helped me purchase. And her salary, monthly a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month salary, um, which obviously we're now behind a year on, but, um, I don't see any reason why we can't move forward. I, I've never heard, but, you know, technically you're supposed to spend the money within a year, but I think with this year, that, you know, all bets are off. So I've been trying to consider whether I should let them know that we haven't moved forward on that, but they've never gotten in touch with me, um, about it. And, you know, if anything, it, as part of this grant, you know, I can probably mention again that, um, we are still in the process of, of putting up the, the, uh, hanging system and starting art exhibits, but the, that won't be happening for a while, but that we are getting the, the mechanics in, you know, in motion. So, you know, hopefully that will make a difference.
You could send them a picture of the painted walls once they're painted.
True, true.
Okay.
So if, you know, if you wanna say you're out, you're fine to go with solemn silence, which is exactly what's going on in that room right now, um, that would be great.
Until Tuesday.
Until Tuesday.
Right.
Which brand of paint?
Yeah.
It is Behr, B E H R.
Home Depot.
Home Depot, yeah.
Yeah.
We have to vote on this officially?
Why?
I mean, I'm just curious, I mean, it's wonderful that, I, I appreciate you asking and doing all of this, but I just wonder if this is something we have to vote on, cuz I think it's great. So.
It was always my understanding that any changes to the building, including paint colors, was supposed to be approved by the trustees.
Okay, then I make a motion to approve solemn silence on the walls.
Second. Okay, Terry seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Brand do you use?
Yeah. Yeah.
I just called it up on my screen. I went to, I went to.
Oh, you went to Home Depot? Okay.
I just did, I just did a Google, a search for Behr solemn silence.
Okay.
Looks nice.
Yeah, it's, you know, it, it's kind of neutral and you can hang anything in front of it. And I think that's probably what your.
Perfect.
Her goal was, you know.
Yep.
This is, is kind of a, it does, everything is done basically on the agenda. But just to kind of update Alex and I, uh, we had our moving company in force yesterday. We, uh, moved the chairs out of the, uh, out of the meeting room because they have to set up, um, the bowling place. So that was done yesterday, um, and, uh, at Erin's behest, we moved the big table that we usually sit at, uh, under the windows, so that that whole area is now wide open for. Under the windows so that that whole area is now wide open for, I don't know.
Parties.
Yeah, parties.
Dancing.
And I guess, you know, that, that area is gonna, you know, it's gonna be used for quarantining stuff for the, for the time being anyway, while. Room is being set up for the polls. Last week, Jean and I met with James because the town had requested. Any, any request that we had for capital expenditures had to be in by like next week. And so I had requested that we meet with James since 65,000 ballers had been approved at the last town meeting for. For capital improvements to the building, and I wanted to find out where we were at with that before we started looking for additional funds. And because of the whole COVID thing, everything has been slowed down, and those funds are still available and will be expended over the course of the next year, so I think. Kind of decided that we would not request any capital funding for the next year, since we're still in the process of spending monies that. We already have and have not expended, so it'd be tough to go in and ask for additional money when you haven't even spent the money we've already given you. Also. Town apparently from, what I'm hearing from Jean and from James, we're on the, on the cusp of being approved as a green community. Is now going to open up a substantial amount of resources to us going forward. And I think, did he say, Jean, there was gonna be $200,000 available to town?
That's what I thought he said, yeah.
Yeah, and for our energy improvements, and the places that are, are probably gonna get the bulk of that are. The elementary school and us, since they've already done a number of things, the fire station apparently has been upgraded, heating and air conditioning. They're not gonna do anything to the old town hall. What else did he say, oh, the town, the town barn apparently doesn't even use, well, they use. Waste oil for, for heating down there, so they, you know, they just take it out of the trucks, I guess, and throw it in the burner. So they, so there's going to be a substantial amount of money available going forward, so we felt that it wouldn't be prudent to be asking the town for. Additional capital monies at this point, since there's going to be somewhere available, so.
Including for electric cars.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, I think there's every indication that'll go through in the spring. He even had, well, he had Lori Timmerman, I think her name was, that we met with here to do an audit. Or a energy audit, so they're in touch, they know each other, so we should be able to go full steam ahead in the spring. I will tell you that Fred Darty sent a submission for doing our, doing that, because he is doing that now. At least he told me he sent me one, but I don't seem to have it, so I'm gonna email him again, I think he sent it to the wrong address or something, but. But hopefully that, we can make that happen, which really made me happy.
Yeah, I, I think the, the fact that we're going to be a green community is gonna open up a whole host of opportunities for sustainability and those kinds of issues. Solar panels on the roof is still an issue because of the age of the roof. So, I guess if there's sufficient money, you could replace the roof panels on. I think we only got about 10 years' life left in that. And, yeah, so, but it's, it's, it's all positive stuff, good stuff, James was, seems to be on top of things. I think he even talked about getting another split unit into small meeting room. Thought that you could pull that off without any difficulty, another split unit.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and I think the one place we don't have a split unit yet is in the local history room, right?
Right, the local history room, and then the children's office and the small meeting room.
Okay. But he thought he could pull off the small meeting room, I think, this year without any difficulty, so he seems to be, you know, on top of what's going on. So we felt it prudent not to ask for mon, money that we really, like, couldn't spend in the, in the foreseeable future, so. But I think the green community thing is really going to be the homes of the town, I think, in terms of energy conservation. That was just, that's an aside, you know, it was on the agenda, but I think it's probably bringing everybody up to speed.
Can I?
All right.
Yeah.
Good, Terry.
If anybody knows on the status of COVID-19 in Newbury, I got the email yesterday. That Newbury Port is now a red zone.
But Newbury is not.
Oh, wow.
Newbury is not, but hold on, I can go to the Globe Line and tell you the statistics in about a second.
It's either gray or green, I think.
Terry, Newbury Port is a red zone, as you just said?
Yeah.
I did not know that.
There are actually a whole bunch of places that just became red.
Yeah, it like doubled in a week.
Yeah.
The number of places.
I'll forward the email to you, Margaret. I can forward the email to you.
Thanks.
Talks about how many people have contracted, how many are in hospital. Not.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Anybody want to go shovel smaller, I think the town has been, they've been sanding out here and, you know, seems to be working, I can see the pavement now. Oh, well.
I'm gonna get my cross-country skis out.
You could use them.
Yeah, I mean, before it turns to slush.
Yeah.
Yeah, they probably will do that.
Yeah.
Although they said black ice tonight, I didn't like the sound of that.
Oh dear, really?
Yeah, they did.
Oh, oh.
Here we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm not going anywhere.
Are we, is, is the town open for Halloween tomorrow night?
Newbury is, yeah.
Newbury is, okay. Okay.
Do you want to, do you want the COVID statistics, I have them, Terry? Do you want the COVID?
Yes.
So, a total of 28 confirmed cases, it's a rate of 100,392. And.
This is Newbury, right?
The total positive tests in the last two weeks are six, but the percent positivity in the last two weeks is 0.9.
For Newbury?
In Newbury.
And that's, the state is at, I think, 6% positivity rate or something like that.
Newbury Port just went up to 2.03.
Yeah.
They had 35 positive tests in the last two weeks.
Wow, that explains it, yeah.
You know, I said our rate for 100,000 was 392 and theirs is 979.
Oh my, right.
And West Newbury is high too, 552, and they have a 1.5%.
Thank you.
So do you want to pick a date for the next meeting?
Friday's work, okay?
Just not the one after Thanksgiving.
That's a good point, Jean. We're, we're all gonna have the day off. Want to do it before that?
Do the 20th?
20 is good, three weeks out.
Sure.
Aye.
Okay, want to do the 20th?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
At 10 o'clock?
10 o'clock.
And before we leave, I just want to say, for those of you who may have been wondering, not that you have been, I've pushed the release date of my novel, it's gonna come out in February, not in.
It's gonna come out when?
In February, I need much more time for marketing than I.
Okay.
I didn't know you were working on a novel.
I've been working on it for a long time.
Oh, great.
So it's coming out, it's coming out.
Good.
On Grand Hard Day.
Does it come out every single year at the same?
If you buy the book and you see your shadow, you have to buy 10.
Well, that will be a glimmer of light in a very likely dark February, so that's great, yay.
It's been an interesting process, I'll tell you, really challenging.
I'm sure.
Should write a book about that.
How many people do, there's so many people that make a living off of desperate writers.
Excellent.
All right, I move to adjourn this meeting.
Okay, seconded. Okay, Terry seconded it, okay, all right, everybody, Halloween and see you. And don't forget, go vote.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
You bet.
All right, take care.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everyone.
Bye now.